Have a good call on your life, sir. Best place for us, wish you well.
See, I didn't know he was here. I'm used to hearing him behind me complaining about my strike zone.
Oh, you go here tonight. There's gonna be some strikes. One curve ball and one drop ball.
I better open my strike zone up there.
You need to come and watch the zoo.
All right, we got seven o'clock. Probably May the 2nd of 2016, Person County Commission has been ordered. Mr. Clayton, if you would lead us in prayer, and Mr. Kendrick, if you would pledge for us, please.
Just by our heads. Heavenly Father, please be with all of those that are here tonight that have business before us. Please be with our young men and women in foreign lands as they go about doing their duty to allow us to have meetings as such as this. Please be with all of those that have had sickness and other problems over the past few weeks. In thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Any additions?
I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to the agenda, please.
Okay.
PCC and Dr. Bartlett are here, and I want to discuss the workforce development center that's across the road. Interject it into the, oh, business, please.
All right, any other adjustments?
Move or approve with the amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Informal comments. Mr. Edcock, you're up.
Thank y'all tonight for letting me come and state my situation. And it strictly, I think some of you are aware already that what I'm here for is the Little League, Person County Little League. And I know I've been told that some of the things don't have anything to bear on y'all, but I also understand one commissioner is also on the recreation committee, and I'd like to address that. And everybody has a memory of Little League. If anybody that played Little League sports, I can remember Wayside Grocery, Olive Hill Championship game, bottom of the seventh. One player made the ultimate error. We lost the championship game. Live with me since I was, I think, nine years old. Garner, playing the Little League championship, well, it wasn't actually the championship, but was playing in the game. The director of the tournament told me we set a record. We played against the Chapel Hill team four and a half hours till midnight. It's as far as you can play Little League. I had a girl playing for me, and just giving you the background. She was on third base, and I noticed the catcher was making mistakes. I told the little girl, I said, "Please, run home and smell her breath." She said, "But I might get out." I said, "But you might be safe." She ran home, she scored. Her dad in the stands was livid. He was so happy. Memories. Little League builds memories. I also have a banner that some girls, I didn't have anything to do with except for coach. They earned these banners, just to show you the background that I do know a little bit about Little League. I was sitting at the Christmas parade, a man jumped off the float and said, "The county's taking over." "Man, we need you out there." I said, "Man, I'm done with it." I said, "You know what happens when government gets involved." No pun intended, anybody. I said, "I've been in Little League with the county." I said, "I'm gonna wait it out and see it." He come to me again and asked me, he said, "Man, you need to come out there. Of all your background, some odd fifteen odd years, you can help." So I said, "I'll give it a try." I went to the evaluations, and you can see with my family, I'm been blessed with all daughters, and one's at the high school game at Northern. Go to the evaluations, my daughter goes through, I don't follow her. I let her go through evaluations, run by kids, and one man that's a professional ballplayer. I didn't have any problem with it, because it's the same way Roxboro Little League did it the year before. Comes out, says, "We ain't gotta tell her nothing. She's an awesome ballplayer." I said, "Okay, thank you." There's a lady sitting behind the counter, I asked her, I said, "Ma'am, I don't know who you are." I said, "Are you, do you work with the program down here?" She goes, "No, I am the director of Little League at the new Roxplex." I said, "Well, I don't believe I know you." She commenced to telling me who she was, and I told her about how I used to coach and everything, and that I was gonna turn my paperwork in and want to coach. No problem. One of my children gets sick, I have to go to another evaluation. But that night, I sit around and I talked to all the parents and everything, and they said, "Do you know what's going on?" I said, "No." So they started telling me about the coaching and all, and how they were gonna do it. I said, "Well, we'll just have to see." They combined the league between ten U and twelve U. Everybody knows there's a calculator, the U's, that Little League has set up. My daughter's playing age at December of 31st, 2015, was 11 years old. She's 12 now, but that doesn't matter in Little League's world. You're 11. When they put these teams together, they put them all together from 10 to 12, and they moved some eight U up. I didn't have any problem with that, because the year before, my daughter played on the twelve U team, and she's eight. Well, now she's nine. I talked to her for a few minutes, and backed it to the director, and I told her, you know, the first thing I got was abrasive. "You guys built the fields wrong. You've been running Little League wrong." I said, "Whoa." I said, "All I've done is coach. I said, "I didn't run anything. Didn't build anything, but I'd be glad to let Merrill Solomon know." So we went on and we talked, and I didn't understand that situation. But then later on, I went in and I talked to her about why, when she called my wife the day after the little one went for her evaluation on Wednesday, I asked her, "Why did you call my wife and tell her she can't play? She can't play." I said, "Her playing age is 11 years old." She said, "She's too good to play with these girls." I said, "Excuse me? She's too good to play with these girls." I said, "But her playing age is the same. Everything, there's..." Here's the book, written in black and white, rules. There's no rule in here that says she can't play. But my Parks and Rec has a board that is looted every time when I try and go somewhere. I went to John Hill. "I'm sorry, Mr. Edcock, my hands are tied. You have a board out there. We're just a facilitator. But if you look," and I have a letter from them, "if you look at that letter, the president of that board is a Person County employee." And here's the letter they sent me after Mr. Hill gave me three minutes in front of them to explain my situation, that she can't play. She's ineligible because of her evaluations. Now, Mr. Attorney, County Attorney, I'll ask you. When do we discriminate against players with disability? Pretty much, you'll say, "Never." Then why do we discriminate, which is a clear-cut case of discrimination against a person with ability? I can't fathom it. I've been doing this for a long time. In my tenure of Little League, we've never turned a child away. I can't fathom them coming to me and telling me, in my five days after my three-minute meeting, the shocking-all letter I got, that your daughter can't play because she's too good. Ray, I'm really addressing this to you, because I know the board doesn't have any, it's, we've got that board, so it's not a county issue. But every time I go back and look at this letter, that county employee has got president beside it. You tell me, and I wasn't the only one, Michelle Rien's daughter was also, and she was totally upset. They went to evaluations and did good. Told them they did great, and said they'll have a great season out there. Three days later, they get a phone call, "You can't play." This little girl laid across her bed, because I called her mama. I did my fact checks. I called her mom and I asked her, I said, "Michelle, what was your opinion?" She said, "I had to explain to this girl for two days, you didn't do anything wrong, so it's just something they come up with." So I didn't say anything, and I've actually tried to blend in. I'm not a coach anymore, and I've got kids running up to me, asking me, and I still help these girls. Because I'm telling you, I love this game, and if you look at my shirt, I represent this county, this state, in Florida, as the state champs. Now, that's not nothing lightly. But our school systems, and this is y'all's department, our school systems, that we all fund this Parks and Rec, and this, something's going on. You don't have a Southern team anymore. They've forfeited the rest of the season. If you're aware of that? I mean, and it's not just that, it's all, it's all sports, there's a problem. The Northern team played a Halifax team, a very disciplined team. The first inning took an hour and a half, nineteen to zero. Now, I'll allude to the rules. I don't know if they had this letter sent, which is a waiver of rules and regulations, but there's a set of rules in this book that we follow. So when I go there, the coach of our team, which I'm helping, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go away and tuck my tail and cry. I'm still in this for the kids. I talked with him. He asked me, he said, "Mr. Edcock, are you aware of the rules?" I said, "No." He gave me a copy. In girls' fast pitch, when you turn ten, and ten on up, you start playing aggressive. So our Person County Little League decided to take away the aggressiveness and dumb it down. You can't have a pitcher pitching, you don't have any walks, you don't have any stealing, you don't have any bunting. Nothing aggressive in the game. You've dumbed it down. So when they go to the middle school, they don't understand, "Wow, you can steal? You can bunt? We're dumbing it down." And when we go to these other schools, we're getting killed. Gravely Hill, a middle school, played Southern. Twenty-seven, twenty-seven to zero. I mean, and I got some answers. I got some great things that I could do, and I could see the programs. But you got RCS, they play in the sixth grade. Person County Schools can't play in the sixth grade. I don't know where that come from. I didn't, I didn't get involved in that. But the reason I do this, I have enjoyed being on your team. Thank you for being a great coach. Love, Kate, number 20. That's the reason most of us do this and represent our county. And I mean, I've got kids that come up to me now. This senior team on the high school was my first All-Star team. Why I took that All-Star team? There was a fourteen U and a twelve U. Well, the twelve U team is not having any gumption of going to a tournament and playing. I said, "But these kids think they're gonna be on the All-Star team. We're not gonna send them. We're not gonna pay for it." I said, "I'll take them." I took them, I went to Garner, I came in third in the district, out of seven teams. I know that doesn't mean anything to anybody, but I want you to understand one thing. In Person County Little League, turn to the Person County Little League, or PCLL, and look at their vision. How are you serving the children if you don't allow them an opportunity to play? Suggesting they commute to Bull City and play. I didn't pay my taxes in Bull City. I pay my taxes in Person County. I so therefore believe that I should be represented in Person County. My child is the right age. She goes out every afternoon and she plays sports and practices, and she tries to get better at it. So what do we do for her going out and not becoming, what's the last name of a couch, girls? You sit on the couch, you'll be a potato. You go out and work at it, you'll be butter. Jenny Fitch didn't sit on the couch. She went out and worked at it. So did my daughter. So she got good. What do we do for her? We tell her she can't play. Best part of it was, if you would've told her to go to the evaluations and be sorry, don't put forth your great effort, you'll probably get to play. But if you go do good, you're gonna get penalized. How can you say your mission is to be an outstanding educational athletic organization that provides high-quality experience in which every athlete is coached using the principles of Little League? We've taken this book, and we don't run by the rules. We go with our little board, and we make up new rules. But turn around, like I did Saturday on opening day, and watch the boys. You didn't see a coach go out there and pitch to them? You didn't see any of them not get walked? You didn't see any of them get dumbed down, hollering and inaggressive? But you go to the girls' field, it was pathetic. And I've been watching this all my life, and those girls are awesome players. Don't tell me they can't be taught. You take five minutes with a player, and you talk to them, and you teach them, and they can play ball. But you dumb it down, and when they get to middle school, "I don't wanna play this. These girls are trying to kill each other." That's the sport, aggressiveness. He's umpired the games. He's seen it. When a girl comes around third, she ain't coming around not to break her nails. She's coming around hauling some butt to go to that plate. Right or wrong? The school systems are really changing in athletics. It's not like it was when I was coming up. We wanted to get out of a biker field, so they let us play ball, and we was gone. So, in closing, I want you to understand one thing. Sammy Jo works out. She does good in the yard. For her effort, she was rewarded in a negative way. So remember the Person County vision and mission. Read it, because we sure not following it. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, Brian. All right.
Mr. Edcock, could you give that letter to the clerk, and she can make a copy, so we can, I can have a copy of that letter? And she'll make sure you get it back.
Yeah, Brian, just keep that. All right. Everybody had a chance to look at the concerned agenda?
Move for approval?
All right, now, everybody understand the Research Triangle Regional Partnership? That's just reappointing the existing people. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Beth Townsend, if you would come forward.
Thank you.
Well played, Beth. Well played. So Beth, well played.
July 4th is a time to reflect on how wonderful it is to be an American, to remember with great pride the freedoms that we have, to join with family and friends, to celebrate our great nation. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the Director's Roundtable and as a citizen of Person County. Tonight, I'm here to ask the Person County Government to support the 2016 July 4th fireworks display. As everyone knows, July 4th is an exciting holiday for kids and adults alike. I can remember the first fireworks show that my daughter and I attended at Person High School. What a crowd. With her hands over her ears, she was two, Olivia and I oohed and aahed at the flash of lights in the sky. I can still hear her say, "Do it again, do it again." How fortunate we are as a community that we can enjoy this every year, and in fact, do it again. Of course, like everything else, a show that brings a crowd costs money. This year, the fireworks will cost just over $9,000. The city of Roxboro covers this cost, however, knowing how important it is for our community, the members of the Director's Roundtable have once again offered our support. In fact, in addition to hosting a free-entry parade earlier in the day, we have committed $1,500 to this year's fireworks display. We respectfully ask that the Person County Government consider doing the same or something similar. I know that all of you recognize the benefits of partnerships. This particular partnership will help Personians know that our city, our county, our community groups, our merchants association, our community college, we all partner together and value the events that we can host in this county, and that we value the attendance that our Personians bring to these events. This is a very special event. Obviously, these kids are, you guys are all gonna get fireworks, right?
Yes.
And so I hope you will take this into consideration when you consider this request of funding for the Fourth of July this year.
Can you tell me how much each one of them is putting in? Did the tourism?
Tourism put in $1,500.
Okay.
Yes, sir, and...
Has the city put in any?
The city is going to cover whatever amount is not covered. So right now, they're in for a great deal.
Tourism put fifteen, and what about the round table, where you showed the bar?
I'm sorry, it's not tourism. It's the Director's Roundtable put in $1,500.
Okay.
So the Director's Roundtable is made up of the Tourism Development Authority, the Merchants Association, Piedmont Community College, many other groups.
How about the Chamber, are they involved in that?
Yep, the area, Roxboro Area Chamber of Commerce. That is what comprises the Director's Roundtable. It's a full group.
Excuse me, Beth, TD8 does do a grant of an extra $500 towards the, every year.
I thought you did something else.
Yes, sir.
Extra five?
Five hundred.
In previous years, the city has also worked with local businesses and asked for their support. Last year, I believe, they had raised $3,000 towards the event. So again, we're just looking for a little support, so that the city doesn't have to fund the bulk of the program.
And what was estimated cost again, Beth?
Just over $9,000.
So have we looked, even though we don't have, you don't have the money secured yet, have you looked to see, I know in the past, we've looked at having it on the fourth or the day after,
We're having it on the fourth.
I mean, have you looked at this? So you've got a vendor that's...
It is secured for the Fourth this year. Yes, sir.
I look down through here, and I'd be remiss to say that a lot of these organizations, the taxpayers of Person County already put quite a bit of money into budgets for these different organizations that are here. So we've already, in a sense, funded the fireworks organization.
Well, I beg to differ, just because the funds that we raise for this particular event are done through actual fundraisers. For example, several of us went out smelling like barbecue on Friday to help raise money for the activity. So the money does not come from the county to go through those organizations to support this event. It just so happens that those are the members who volunteer to participate in the Director's Roundtable.
But this Person County Senior Center got $100,000 taxpayer money. PCC got taxpayer money. RDG got taxpayer money. So in a sense, the taxpayers have funded.
No, not, not actually true, because the funds that we use for the fireworks are actually raised in different fundraising activities for the event. So the actual Piedmont Community College is not paying towards the Director's Roundtable. It's my efforts on behalf of the college as a Director's Roundtable member. It's Alicia's efforts. It's Maynell's efforts.
So these groups send a person to make up the roundtable. I mean, it's not necessarily they fund anything for the roundtable. I mean, they just have a representative that's...
At the roundtable.
That makes up the roundtable committee.
Got you.
So you will be, so you got two grants, so you need roughly seven grants?
Yes.
And so I'd be willing to make a motion to fund $4,000 and let the city, because you said maybe a little over nine, let the city match us, hopefully. That's what we've done in the past, is we try to match what the city does. And so I'll make that a motion to fund $4,000 out of contingency, Heidi.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Two to one?
No vote means yes, in this, in this group, we're done.
Thank you all.
Unless you wanna show your hands, but that's, it's four to one to me. Hit the gavel just to make sure, Mr. Chairman. Bam, there you go.
Motion passed.
We really appreciate the support.
All right. Ms. Weinberg.
It's all right. Mine's not as exciting a topic. You have a capital project ordinance in your packet. This is to establish a budget for the construction of two communication cell towers, the purchase of VHF equipment, handheld and vehicular radios, and implementation of a broadband grant program. This is a project that was presented and approved in the county CIP to be financed through an installment purchase contract. This ordinance sets aside $100,000 in contingency funds to cover possible project bid overages and any other unforeseen costs. The ordinance also provides certain authorizations to staff, including the ability to advance funds to cover related expenditures prior to securing adequate financing. The total loan for this project is estimated to be $3,973,600, barring any adjustments that would be necessary after construction bids are received by the spring of 2017. If you accept the terms and establishment of this ordinance, I would ask that you approve it as presented.
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Give the floor to you.
Well, I'd like to give the floor to Dr. Bartlett first. He wanted to come and discuss the PCC side of workforce development, and why we have some leasing agents or some lease-ors in the building across the street, and then we'll fall into discussion and questions after that. It's okay.
Dr. Bartlett, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir, and thank you commissioners for giving me an opportunity to talk about the situation. Thank you. Tracy, I talked to Commissioner Kendrick today, and he talked us out.
I think what I asked him to do is allow me an opportunity to give some background information of where we are with this and where it comes from. And from the big picture, all of this is established under what used to be the Workforce Investment Act, WIA. They have come through in the federal level and changed it to WIOA, which is the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act. And with that new act, the state had to come through and make some major changes. One of the new major changes they did is they created what is now referred to as NC Works. And NC Works is an umbrella which all things related to employment, dislocated workers, employment training falls under in terms of the state and with COG and CAR-TAR and that. Back in 2015, what you had is the CAR-TAR and the COG, they went through a new process. We have been awarded the grant to work with dislocated workers, adults, and youths through CAR-TAR and the COG for many years, 20 years or so. And then in 2015, a new process was developed, and in that new process, the guidelines on the proposals to create the grants were changed, and in so doing, both Piedmont Community College and Vance Granville were not awarded, and Vance Granville was, in fact, the winner of those awards back in the day when we were getting it as well. The COG decided to give it to a company, GMSI, and it's a nonprofit organization out of Durham. And at the same time that this was occurring, the state was downsizing and significantly reduced the funding for the Employment Security Commission, and in that, they came through and changed it from the Division of Workforce Solutions, DWS. And if you recall, back in that, during that time, is when they reduced the funding to the point where the Employment Security Commission, which used to be housed in a facility across from Golden Corral, they had to move out because they didn't have the funding to support that. They came to us at that time and said, "Can we move onto campus?" And we had said to them, "Sure." But then we were notified at the same time that GMSI, this for-profit organization that won the award, was gonna have to come with us, with them. And GMSI, at this time, was not communicating with us. Now, what GMSI did, and what we do, is we provide skills training, career counseling, HRD, how to create resumes, so forth, you know, how to close that skill gap, and that's pretty much duplicating what GMSI was gonna do the same thing in this area. They were gonna do a lot of things that we were already getting paid for, by the state to do. So, we were gonna work with them, see if we could partner. GMSI did not wanna partner with us, so we did not allow them on our campus. So, they ended up going to the Roxborough Building. Year later, the new grant was awarded to EDSI, another nonprofit organization out of Durham. At that time, the DWS said that they needed to get out of the Roxborough Building, and so we partnered with them to move over into Huck Sandsbury, where we do a lot of careers counseling, HRD training, right there at Huck Sandsbury. At the same time, EDSI reached out and started communicating with us and said, "Hey, we'd like to partner with you too. We'd like to do some things. We do this, you do this. There's no need for us to duplicate." By not duplicating the services we provide, they were able to use their funds to send more people to training without duplicating the services we already provided. So, it worked out good. In the process, we were bringing in a profit organization into the organization. We were fulfilling a mission that we've always been doing over there, and that is working and partnering to provide employment training for displaced workers, adults, and youths. We did that. In hindsight, we should've come to Heidi and said something to her about the fact that we were doing what we felt when doing this, we were trying to cover ourselves because in the process of this, and again, it would've been better if we'd have said it was a cost-sharing initiative versus a sublease, because what, when they come in and they have an office, they're, they will be using, and they are, using the receptionists that we pay. They're using our internet, they're using the utilities that the county provides. We provide the main, I mean, the facilities in terms of custodial, and they were using that. So, we were looking for a cost-sharing opportunity. And at the same time, the sublease that we did also spelled out some liability issues in terms of insurance and so forth. Again, in hindsight, you know, we didn't, we weren't trying to cover anything up. We were really trying to serve people of Person County. It was something that we've been doing for forever and a day, and that is providing workforce development training for displaced workers, and we were partnering with them. This is a new thing for us. We never had to partner with, in terms of to this degree, especially with for-profits. So, this is what we came up with. And since that time, it's come to us. We have submitted it to the county manager, who has submitted it to Mr. Akok to have it reviewed, and we look for guidance. And I think there's some discussion about having us have a lease, because up to this point, the college hasn't had a lease agreement or an agreement of some memorandum of understanding with the county for that space. I welcome that in terms of providing us some opportunity for guidance on what we can and can't do. We, in no way, have been trying to do anything that's illegal. Again, we're doing what we normally do and what we've always been charged to do by the state and the county, and that's work to help people get jobs, train folks that are out of jobs.
Roxy Russell with the unemployment agency. Since we no longer have the office out on Weeks Drive, did we provide that space? I mean, who's? How did they get that space?
The former space that they were in on Weeks Drive?
No, no, they have an office now over here at Huck Sandsbury.
Right. They had money from the state to fund that lease at the time, and then when the state took that funding away, that's what prompted them to search for cheaper space for them.
But the state pays that?
Yes.
And they pay that to us, or?
I'm not aware that they're paying any money.
We're not getting anything from that.
Yeah.
So, the state has a representative over at Huck Sandsbury?
The Employment, the Division of Workforce Solutions does. We basically, the way their new system is, part of the NC Works, is if someone's going to go for unemployment, they have to come in, they have to go through NC Works, they have to file for it. And we, so we offered, we gave them an office for the Employment Security Commission with phone and internet access, so they could serve the folks right there in the office next door, since they had to work, because that's part of the grant with the COG. EDSI is next door. And now, I guess there's a new entity, Telamon, which is being part of the governor's initiative, if I'm not mistaken, that's coming in. It's a community-based organization, and from my understanding, it's gonna be duplicating a lot of the services that EDSI has and what the college is doing, but it's coming from a different funding source.
Has a sublease been signed for that company?
Not yet, no, sir. At this point, we're looking for guidance from the county attorney.
Who paid? Who? From an insurance standpoint, does the county hold general liability for that building?
Yes, we did check with our provider, and we would be the ones who'd be responsible for any instances over there, no matter who it was.
And we pay for the utilities?
We do.
Except minus the internet, which is provided, of course, from PCC.
Yes, we pay electricity, gas, and water.
Got any idea how much it is?
It's about 25,000, about 26,000 roughly, but it's tied in with the, it's one building, so it's one meter that's tied in with John Hill and his staff and their space, so I don't have a way to separate that cost out. But it is 26,000 annually that we're paying on that building. And we're also putting a new roof and a new HVAC system currently in the works on that building. And that was about $100,000 for the roof and about $18,000 for the HVAC improvements.
So, you're unemployed, it's kinda like a one-stop shop?
Correct. Where they come in. And I think, you know, the one thing that I want to say too is that it's not just the receptionists that they use, but our employees over there, this is, because this is what they've been doing forever and a day. They are there to serve citizens that come in that need work. So, if Roxy's not there, if someone's not there, they go ahead and serve them. They go ahead and, you know, because they normally have to go through Roxy to file, to go onto the computer, to fill out the forms, to get themselves registered. And if they're, the folks aren't there, our folks will go ahead and do that for the, they don't, so, I mean, you know, we provide a lot of services that they're, when they're not there.
So, you have the receptionists and who else over there? Custodians, the receptionists?
We have a custodian that comes over there. But we have, I have two full-time people that are there the entire time. I have the receptionists as part-time, 26 hours a week. We have a part-time instructor there, 20 to 26 hours a week. We have another employee there, 26, so, depending on the needs, they come in and go.
Were we, as a, this was before my time, were we aware that the Employment Security Commission had moved people to that building when it occurred? I'm assuming in 2015 or 2014?
No, I wasn't aware. I remember we talked about looking for space for them because they wanted on the campus.
Right, Monica.
And I knew the Roxborough Building, but I was not aware they were across the street.
But they just, they haven't been there since 2014, 2015. They just recently got there.
The Roxy?
Roxy and them. Because they were up in the Roxborough Building.
Right.
After they left the Weeks Avenue building.
But we weren't aware of them being over there from a county standpoint?
Yes, sir.
And EDSI, until the young lady came over and started handing out business cards in the county office building, we weren't aware that EDSI was over there.
We heard from Telamon that they were going over there. That's how we found out.
So, there were gonna be a total of three different organizations that we didn't know that were gonna be over there? Correct?
Yes, sir.
How many of those are full profit?
Two.
I've not had any interaction with them.
EDSI is only full, for-profit. Telamon, I believe, is a community-based organization. My understanding, it's a nonprofit organization. And then ESC, Division of Workforce, is a state agency.
Dr. Bartlett, I respectfully disagree that this is a cost-sharing, because it's obvious dated November the 3rd, 2015, that there's a lease and sublease agreement for the amount of $250 per month, and it even goes to discuss improvements to the premises that would be made by the leaseor. So, I don't understand how you could look at this document and say it's a cost-sharing agreement. It's nowhere near an agreement that says it's a cost-sharing agreement. I think it was entered into as a lease agreement and was meant to be a lease agreement.
Well, I mean, we're collecting fees that would then help us offset the fees in which we're paying to pay for the receptionists, custodial staff, internet.
Well, it says in here that telephone and internet are not included in the rent under utilities.
Mr. Attorney, where do we stand from a legal standpoint?
There is, I have not found any lease from the county to the community college. If there is no lease of facilities, there is no authority for the community college to sublease something. So, the sublease apparently is an attempt to sublease property that there's no control by the community college. County, it's the county's property. The community college, for whatever reason, thought they had the right to sublease, but I see no legal basis for a sublease, because a sublease is based upon a lease. And since there's no lease from the county to the community college, there is no authority for the community college to sublease from a lease that is not existent.
So, this expires, I mean, given it was, you know, valid, it expires in two months. Is there interest for them to stay in that building after July?
I mean, it's all part of, I mean, again, you know, I will admit an error. I mean, we should have come and gotten counsel. It was not done in a malicious way. It was done in a way to help with the partnership. It's a private-public partnership between EDC, the Division of Workforce Solutions, in terms of, and it's part of the whole new process in which NC Works and the COG and them is working with a kinda integrated solutions process, where it's all in one space. So, when someone comes in, they don't have to go anywhere. They can stay right there and get all of their things taken care of.
Mr. Chairman, I want to point out, I think that early on in this whole process, when the other company had the contract that was in Durham.
GMSI?
I think people were having to go about three or four different places to get their stuff done. They came, maybe even had to go to the community college, and they came over here, and then they went up. It was not good for the people that were trying to get the service. So, I understand what he's saying about that part of it, and it's not having anything to do with the contract part, just kinda telling you where they're at with that, because when it was first done, there was a lot of tension between the private and the public and the whole works, to be honest with you, because the state changed the rules and everybody had to try to adapt to it. And I'm not saying that's good or bad. I think their intent was to try to get more of the funds to the workers to get them placed quicker. I think that's what their intent was, and I'm not sure that's what actually happened when they split it up and basically closed the employment security out there and had people going to several different places, and it wasn't just here, it was in other counties too. What looks like has transpired, about time this lease looks like it was brought into effect, was that it looked like that all of the entities were beginning to try to work together better than they had in the past. That's the way I'm reading it, because I know there was a real problem in the very beginning. So, it looks like they were trying to work together to try to get them, and I think getting them all in one building, if there's any way it can be worked out, no matter what we work out with this lease thing, if we can work out where we keep it all at one spot, it'll be better for the people trying to get the services. And, you know, it's kinda got to all work together. I mean, you don't want somebody coming in over here to this building, and then you sending them to somewhere else, to everywhere, even if this was just the library or anywhere uptown. I guess we got any, yeah, we do, but if you had an office over at the tax office and you had to send them up there for some kinda interview, then they got to come back. So, it's better if it can all be at one point. So, if there's, if there's any way we can work this out, Dr. Bartlett says it's an error in what was done with this, and I think now we need to move forward with it, if we can, if we can, but if we can keep them all in one place, we'll be better off for this year or somewhere else. But if we've got the space over here, I think we ought to work out some way to try to keep them all together, ever what that is. And it may be something that the attorney needs to work out with them, I don't know.
What is, Ron is reviewing what, at least between the county and PCC?
There is no lease.
So, what was referenced to that you're reviewing?
The sublease.
The sublease.
Who paid? So, EDSI, the rent came from EDSI, didn't come from the COG?
Or did it come from the COG?
COG.
Came from EDSI.
You're right. EDSI is the one that, COG is, the only way COG got involved in it was Workforce Development Board, or they gave them the contract.
Gave them the contract.
They had to bid on it, and they had criteria that the state said, "This is what you've got to do to get the bid," and EDSI got the bid. Now, I'd like to see Vance Granville and Person, and PCC get the bid, what I would really like to see, but hey, you know, I don't know how complicated the bidding situation is, but EDIS is private, and they got the bid, so they're the ones that's running the show with that part of it.
Now, is EDS, I'm sorry, EDSI, they're out, is that right?
No, they're still in.
They're still there.
No, they're there.
They're still there, but they...
In addition to Telamon.
So, I'm getting confused, because I've been hearing, I'm just trying to get to the facts here. So, they're there now. So they're there now.
Yes, sir.
Were they ever given notice that they were to move out?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. So, so now we have EDSI and this new nonprofit coming in.
Telamon.
Okay.
Whatever that is.
All right. In which you haven't had any, they haven't signed one, a lease agreement.
No, we're, at this stage, we're waiting to hear what to do and get a lease. Hopefully, we can get a lease agreement with the county, which will spell out how we need to approach any other partnerships that we need to get into to help with the dislocated worker and that type of thing.
So that was my question. So we, because they sublease, we do need a lease, not a, not a memorandum of understanding. We need an actual lease.
Need some kind of legal documentation.
We can charge them a dollar a year.
Well, well, I understand that we all need to be in the same building, but I have, the problem that I have is that we have a for-profit in a county building and it, it actually is a, is a really good lease. I'd like to be able to get some space with secretarial help for $250 a month. So it's not fair to other for-profit businesses within Person County for taxpayers to be paying for that space, the electricity, the water, the maintenance and everything, when you don't offer that service to any other not-for-pro- for-profit businesses within Person County. So that's the problem that I have. If you're a nonprofit and you're there working for the workforce re-education of individuals within Person County, I don't have a problem with that. But you've got an entity over there that's making money off of this at the expense of the taxpayers of Person County. And it's not fair. I'd love for Sharon to be able to move four limbs into a, into a county building at this rate and have a secretary and a receptionist and everything else. So that's my whole thing. I'm, I'm with Jimmy. I think that if we're going to serve the citizens of Person County, I think we need to come up with something. But it doesn't have to be that a for-profit gets to utilize our building at $25,000 a year for utilities, $100,000 for maintenance costs at the expense of the taxpayers.
Who's making money off of this deal?
I'm not sure where I follow you.
They're saving money.
Hmm?
They all started at state level. They injected this for-profit into the form, it wasn't us, it wasn't you guys. They, they changed the playing field on us and we just tried to deal with it. States are trying to save money.
They're trying to push everything down to the local level and get rid of-
Right, these, these, yeah, but you can zoom in by ten room in a about 2,000 square foot building.
So, you know, they're, you know, you have EDSI, they have a, you know, they have a small profit margin there, there, but-
Well, I mean, to get to his point, they are actually, I assume they are actually making profit off of. So, you know, if they were, if this building wasn't available, they'd have to go rent a place.
With, with the Division of Workforce Solutions.
They already, they are renting a place.
Correct, right. But the way the new system is, is set up, they, they have, they, Division of Workforce Solutions and EDSI need to be together.
What is your estimated operating expense over there for the telephone and internet? Will you all pay?
I don't have it offhand.
How did you come up with the 250 number?
They were happy with it. I mean, we weren't looking to, like I said, we weren't looking to make a profit off them, but we, you know, we wanted them to have some skin in the game. And, I mean, we, we have the mon- I mean, we haven't used the money. We have the money sitting in the bank account.
Well, they're providing the service. So I think we need to figure out if we need to get a lease. And, I mean, they got two more months on this. It may not mean anything to us, but it means something to them, right, because they signed it.
Well, it's a lease, I mean, it's, we just heard from the county attorney that-
Right, it's non-bonded.
It's non-bonded. So this, you know, this really isn't in effect.
That is correct. But I would, but I-
But to that point, I mean, we ain't calling nobody in the morning to tell them to get out, are we? I mean, so we just need to go ahead and figure out a way to do a lease with them to get this to go.
As a county, what we need to decide is how we're going to share the cost. Because you've got a for-profit organization on county, on tax day, pay it down.
So your receptionist, she hourly or salary for her 26 hours a week?
Hourly. And I look for guidance. I mean, you know, we're, you know, because you got, you got multiple entities and if it, you know, with this, this is how we chose to deal with it. And it wasn't correct, but I mean, we'll have a state agency in there. We'll have a nonprofit in there and we'll have a profit, so.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we just go ahead and do the 250 for right now? Because we don't know what else to do. Let the attorney work us out a contract. And I'd say forever what the minimum amount is, let Dr. Bartlett and whoever who else is considered government in there forever what the minimum amount is. And if you're going to charge, this group seems to be happy to pay something, so charge them something. But see if we can get with them and see what, we can work out with them. But to start off, at least of what he's charging them, evidently, they're willing to pay something. So if you don't want to let somebody in there because they're for-profit, then, uh, don't throw them out. But let, let the attorney or somebody talk to them or, you know who, you know how to get him in touch with them.
What was that question, Don?
The intent is to serve the clientele.
Right.
The state injected this formula on us. We, we got a couple of solutions to deal with. We still got to look at what the target, and the target is the clientele, people of Person County. This is the, the way I look at it, this is the Employment Security Commission, unemployment office. They're all in there together. We're trying to refrain them. These other folks are trying to help them prepare themselves to go out and ask for a job. So you always can serve the public.
Mr. Wilson, for the public that are watching, could you just, you know, tell us your role?
My name is Don Wilson, I'm chairman of the board, trustee of the community college.
So you got two months left on this lease, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we've got two months to get something together to go ahead. I mean, I didn't see anywhere in here where this is just going to renew itself. So, I mean, they're expecting to sign something come July 1, I'm sure, to stay in the building. So that gives Ron time to develop a lease between PCC and us. And if we have any ideas that they need to be paying 300 a month or something, I mean, that gives us plenty of time to interject there, right?
All right, Mr. Wilson, you are in the rental business yourself. If you were sitting on this side of the table, what would be your solution?
Well, there are some standard rental rates for commercial rentals, you know, professional space, warehouse space. There's standard amount for, the rule of thumb.
I mean, I'm, y'all asking us for guidance, I'm asking, I'm just trying to keep this open.
A 10 by 10 room in a over 2,000 square foot building. It takes some thoughts and some calculations. The, the other services provided are nominal. Our goal is to serve the public. We don't want to disrupt the service area. What, at what cost did the public, what we're going to gain if we try to raise the documents? Because the filing laws are run, it calls them to move out. And then our clientele's got to run all over the city to try to compensate them. They're already stressed out, working with already. I'd say keep it at 250 until we come up with about a formula. But I don't see a barrier in the whole lot. Not a 10 by 10 out of, out of 2,000 square feet.
That'd be my suggestion, Mr. Chairman. Leave it at the 250 for the private and let them work out an agreement so that we got everything legal and ever what the minimum amount of his, if Dr. Bartlett's got the part with a buck, he's just got the part with a buck.
The, the other group that was supposed to be moving in in May, was there going to be a lease agreement or a cost sharing associated with that group?
Well, I think that's what we'll have to determine, that's, that's-
No, I mean, before we started this process, what there was-
They were a nonprofit, so we weren't going to charge them anything.
They told us they were paying 250 a month.
Oh, okay, well.
When we acquired.
But now we've changed that.
So the name of the nonprofits are?
Telamon Corporation.
Well-
Day for Profit?
No.
Well, you have, the Telamon will be a nonprofit, and that's a community-based organization. You have EDSI, which is a private organization, a profit.
All that indirect.
And you have DWS, which is the state, Employment Security Commission, state agency. So those are the three entities that will be-
Okay.
Mr. Plaite, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Would you please state it?
Charge the EDSI of the private contract of the same thing he's charging them right now, what was that, 250? And work out an agreement with Telamon and Dr. Bartlett's group at the minimum amount that the attorney can work out with them and lease them the building. Anybody got a time limit? No time limit? You just want to lease it to them until they decide?
First of all, the business is us to have some kind of agreement with PCC also.
Yeah, there needs to be a-
Just for-
That'd be fine.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Mr. Attorney, you got a-
I have a question, I'm not sure I have answers, but I have questions. Do I understand that the board wants to enter into a lease with the community college for the entirety of the property for all the providers? And then in that lease, do you want to authorize the community college to sublease a portion of that property to EDSI and Telamon and, and ESC? That's option one. You can do that if you want to. The question-
Isn't that the simplest way to do it?
It is a fairly simple way to do it. A subsidiary question is, who gets the $250? Does that go if, to the community college or does it come to the county?
The county, it's county building, county electricity, county maintenance.
That's whatever the policy is, you want to, we can put it into legal language if you decide what policy you want. If you want the money to come to the county, then, rather than subleasing the entirety of the property to the community college, you would lease the property to the community college only to the extent that non, that nonprofits are going to use that space. Then you'd have a direct lease from the county to the for-profit, EDSI, so the money flows to you. And we can do it either way. There is authority for counties to cooperate in providing services with other governmental-type entities. So we can do it either way. It's your policy decision, where do you want the money to flow to?
Can I make a statement? You know, I, I agree that some of that money should come to the county. I'm not sure, I disagree with all the money that would be raised for rent should come to the county. Because we are the ones paying for the receptionists, we're the ones paying for the internet. There are expenses that we, as an institution, are incurring that they are not providing. So I think there should be a shared amount that would come. If there is to be collected and come to the county and come to us, the college should receive a share of that for the services we render and that we pay for. I disagree.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
My, the only thing I, I understand exactly what you're saying and normally I would agree with you 100%, but I, I guess I used to be on this workforce development board and I've seen this thing jerked around so bad that the people that really got hurt in it to start with were the workers. They got, they were, they were, people were being laid off and the state was changing all of the rules. And here, here the workers were over here trying, just trying to find a job somewhere and they were having to go here, yonder and everywhere. So I understand exactly what you're saying and I understand too. Dr. Bartlett didn't create this for-profit thing. This is something that the state came up with. I think they need to go back and revisit it, but that's their, that's something that the state don't seem to really give a heck what local government wants or needs anyway. But, so I, I understand what you're saying, but in order to offset some of his costs, because they cut him too. The, the state, the amount of money that comes in through that workforce development, they cut everybody on the overhead end. And I don't know how many, I'm sure you don't have as many people working over there as you did seven years ago. I'm just about, know you don't. So I understand what you're saying, but we're already paying the other anyway. And we sort of tripped over this. If we hadn't have tripped over this, it would still be trucking along. Nobody would know the difference. And, and so it got brought to our attention. I think we need to work it out how we need to work it out legally. But I don't have any objection to the money going to help them offset some of the costs as long as they keep everything over here together and cooperate with each other. That's my main goal in this whole thing, is that everybody, and it seems like that's what's beginning to happen. And I know that was not going on, it was going on, but not as smooth as I think it has been going on in the last while. And that was the whole object of it. So I, you know, I got mixed feelings about it, but I really, in this situation, it's, it's something that he didn't bring on himself. And like Chairman Wilson said, it's something that they got dumped in the lap and they're trying to deal with it. So I don't have a problem with him getting the money to offset the costs. That's just where I'm at. With it, I can live with either one. If you want to insert it, it either way in that, in my motion, I'll be glad for you to do that, so.
But aren't some of the clients that come through there, aren't they going to PCC for some workforce development? Yes, and that's part of- And some of those clients that come through there are paid by, either by the state or by the individual themselves that come through there? Most of them that go, that come through training. You mean through the workforce development or through the EDSI and that whole system there? Through the people that walk through the door over there. In some instances, those clients that come through those doors go to PCC and are paid in some way either by the state or themselves for workforce training or development. That is correct. So it's not like we're taking away all your funding for $250. The receptionist over there has benefit because PCC gets students through workforce development. They serve them, yes. And through this partnership, it has opened up, and one of the partnerships why EDSI is so much easier to work with than GMSI, is that they will recommend, if they have clients that come in and go through career coaching and find out what they want, if they want to go through an electrical systems technology, EDSI will send them to the college through the curriculum program. GMSI, people in Roxborough, they weren't sending them to Piedmont, they were sending them to Durham Tech. So they were sending them out of county to get training. They weren't recommending. So with EDSI, they're, they're keeping folks local and that's one of the great things with the partnership.
With, so Mr. Wilson, you said that whole building's about 2,000 square feet. Do we have an estimate about what that size, the space that you have?
They're, they're about 10 by 10.
Okay. So the way I look at it, you know, that's why I asked you how many employees that you have over there. We're only looking at the actual for-profit, because I understood, well, you were saying that we're providing space with tax dollars for for-profit at a pretty good deal. But then when you look at who's the for-profit and they only utilize a 10 by 10 space, I have no problem with that money going to offset that receptionist. Because, I mean, we could take it and offset our utilities, right? But if they're directly having use of those internet and telephone and receptionists there, I don't, I, you know, given our budget and the strained budget of the community college, I don't, I don't see a problem with them keeping that money to offset that receptionist telephone and internet. I don't. I'm kind of like Jimmy, I can live either way, but if you're asking me to choose right now to have a consensus, I would say leave it with PCC.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Well, first, Jimmy, your motion was to continue with this contract, is that correct?
No.
What was your motion?
To award a new contract to PCC to Telamon, how we wanted to do that. Now, we can do it to PCC and let them sublease the, to EDIS, but we would lease it to PCC and Telamon as the non, as the, that's who we would lease it to. And then if you want to let them sublease it for the 250 a month to EDIS, it would be the easiest way for the attorney to draw the papers up. That was my first suggestion. That, that lease is not, is null and void, basically. We start over.
Yes, sir.
And my recommendation was that the attorney work out ever what the lease cost would be to both of them.
Both for the nonprofits.
Right.
If you want to make it simple, just lease it to PCC for a dollar a year.
And, but you got to have in that of taking sublease it to this other group.
Authorize a sublease.
It's got to be worded in there.
I mean, that-
Right, that's fine with me.
That's not a motion, that's just-
That's fine with me.
You want to make it simple, that's simple. But I do think that we need to have some kind of agreement just to make it a binding contract.
Yes.
We also need stipulate that they provide us with a safe harmless clause of some type that makes them responsible- makes them responsible for the liability as much as possible, albeit it's a lot building. They're gonna sue the deepest pocket, but, uh, we need to divert that as much as possible.
Yes, sir.
Is there any recourse for?
We don't wanna, uh, we don't want to obtain any of their liability.
Yes, sir.
EDSI has been operating under a non-bident agreement since October. Is there any recourse that they could go against request their funding back since?
I can, I can see no opportunity for them to seek any kind of damages or recourse from the Community College or from the county. They have in fact received a benefit. They paid for that benefit. They have a, two more months left on their lease. I don't think they could go back and get anything. I don't want to get too legal, but there is a provision, the last of the contract, which may, may give EDSI some recourse to make sure they have it for the remainder of the term. But if your intention is that they have it for the remainder of the term plus the future, there should be no liability issues at all.
Well, don't give me any ideas, Ron.
All right, now the, um, I don't know what kind of term we're gonna put on this lease.
I will coincide with, if you're gonna do another two-year lease with EDC, EDSI, doing a two-year lease with PCC, I will let it coincide whatever the sublease is gonna be.
Were y'all intending to move these functions to the workforce training center at some point? I mean, the, uh, small business.
That was, you know, in the process of doing the, um, bond.
Right.
The bond was to, to upgrade the second floor of, uh, the B deck and in turn.
Move those.
Move these facility, move these operations.
So we see the end of the road or the, we see a light at the end of the tunnel then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So.
That's even better.
I'm not sure what the timeframe is for that, but we could, you know, coincide the term of the lease.
Right.
With the transition of.
That'll work.
Uh, you know, I would appreciate a five-year term period and that would give us enough time to deal with, you know, construction or state construction and all that and getting that through to get that, you know.
I think approval, we ain't gonna kick you out.
Hmm?
As bad as we wanted it for a rec, so we, we prove we won't gonna kick you out.
All right, floor's open for motions now.
Well, I think I made one.
All right.
A question, it sounds like that from the discussion, that there is some intent for the term of the lease to be commensurate with the estimated time that the Community College will still be in that facility. It's negotiable. I think we're gonna have to talk to the Community College to really get a good sense of how long that term is. We can make it contingent, but you want the term to be as long as necessary to, until the Community College moves their operation to the other facility. Is that what I understand you want?
I say with the, with the sublease because that's the only reason I need, I mean, they need a lease, I guess. If they, if they didn't have, were at subleasing, we would have a memorial understanding for the use of that building probably. But since they're subleasing, we're asked for a lease. Just to prevent any hiccups in the, later on. I mean, what, if I've got a five-year lease and I move out in two years and I give them another sublease for three years, literally I could do that because I have a five-year lease.
That's right. You could, you could just go.
And then Google, you're paying internet and all that stuff if they are now moved.
Yeah, we can work that out.
To the business center. So I would just, I mean, they only need a lease because they're subleasing, so I would, why wouldn't you tie it to coincide with the timing of the sublease?
We can do that.
My opinion.
The only concern I would have is that I don't know how long ED, I mean, the.
They might lose the contract.
They might lose the contract through, through.
We can do that.
That's your sublease. That has nothing to do with our lease.
We can fix that. We can do that. We can fix it.
All right, now the only other thing concerns me is if the county did need that building. How do we?
He'll write an out clause in it. 30 days or 90 days or six months or something.
This one has a 30-day.
He's got a 30-day one in it. He can put an out clause in it. And either party can get out at a certain, for a certain notice.
We can put a termination clause upon notice if that's what you want to do. 30, 60, 90, 180-day notice, whatever seems reasonable. We can put a, a termination upon notice.
You talking about for us? For the lease itself. I'll take much time and be morning.
We gotta be able to kick you out if you kick these people out.
All right, do we have any idea what we voting on?
Yeah. We voting on a lease, PCC to use that facility over there and sublease to. Let me look at this initial again. EDIS?
We probably just want to say authorized sublease.
Generally authorize a sublease to whomever.
Right. Right, okay, that's fine. Yeah, we won't use that, we won't use that initial.
And we're basically just leasing it to pieces.
Right.
Yeah.
So what happens if we're talking about possibly offsetting some cost here for utilities? How, that's gonna be included in the, in the, in the lease as well?
Yes.
And I can understand that the nonprofit side of things because PCC obviously is not, wouldn't be charging them any, any lease, any lease amount. And so for the nonprofit, for the profit itself, I think we need to have some discussion as to what idea, what we're going to, um, what type of cost sharing between PCC, county and goes to, um, and I know Chairman Wilson had brought up some figures, but I think we need to do our, the, um, diligence of understanding, you know, what the fair market value for a lease of that space would be. I'm willing to, I'm willing to honor the agreement up until July 31st. I believe that was what initially was signed.
His suggestion was to keep it 250 if I was, if I understood him correctly.
Now that I had time to reflect on it, I've rented professional office space out before and non-customized office space runs about 18, $20 a foot per year. That's 100 square foot times 20 bucks. It's 10,000 dollars a year. We getting, we getting three. I mean, if you're gonna go by a square foot, Ron, I don't know if you've rented any professional space. Dave, y'all got professional space to rent. I think you'd be happy to get 18, $20 a foot at the Roxboro building.
Oh. I wouldn't let him out of my sight.
I think we already got a decent deal for the square footage. Now, the other areas, the provision of services is a whole different concept. I mean, I'm talking about the secretary and, and the utilities and it's also, I understand that the county gracious to pay the, the utility cost for the college for all our facilities. So if we weren't in there, we'd be somewhere else and that utility bill would be paid by the county anyway on a state statute.
So we leaving the money with them?
Yeah, that was in motion.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
Are we, are we agreeing to the, I mean, is the lease that, what this motion entails? Is that, I, the lease that this motion entails is going to be for how long of a term?
Five years or 90 days notice, something like, something to that effect.
Up to five years.
We need at least 90 days. I mean, we got safe from you guys.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's good.
That's fine.
And we dealing with four agencies at one time, counting us. There's three of them and one of them.
Well, it's 90 enough.
I don't think so, but we want to work with you guys.
How soon can you open the Roxboro building?
One day to the next. Everything's must tomorrow.
I'm fine with that suggestion.
We have to bring the lease back for the board.
Yeah, all this discussion, we ought to bring it back to you and let you see it.
Say at least 90 days.
90 days. Okay. I'm, because there may be some tweaking involved here. I think 90 days is okay and that put us, we're not just rushing to making a decision tonight.
Right.
On it. And I, that's, and that's the least thing I, you know, I think we want to make sure we cover our bases and we're not gonna be able to cover all the bases tonight. But 90 days, I'm comfortable with 90 days.
We tell Ron to go do, cover our bases.
Well.
But we will bring the lease back for the board to actually approve.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So. You'll have another opportunity to review it.
Will you reflect that into your motion?
What's that? Say it again.
90 days.
Might as well have Ron to tell us what she has.
Direct, direct the staff to the, the lease. Let me try the motion that I understand that you may be talking about. Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'm gonna try to state the motion. I used to do this when I was a governing board of my church. Mr. Clayton moves to direct the attorney and the manager to prepare a lease agreement with the Community College for a term not to exceed five years. And in that lease agreement, to authorize the Community College to sublease space to other entities doing the same kind of work the Community College is doing with the provision that any for-profit entity must be charged a market rate rent.
Uh-uh.
No? 250. That the, that the, any private entity will be charged a, a fair rate which is, you want 250, I would, two, $250 a month. Should I be charged $250 a month for that space?
You got that? You got that, clerk? Okay. I'm good, Mr. Newell.
I thought we were gonna, it was gonna be a 90-day.
What do you mean that?
And, and, and there would be an opportunity for either party to terminate the lease upon 90 days' notice.
Right.
And to bring that document back to this board for your final approval.
That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anybody got a better idea what we voting on now? You looked mighty concerned at that.
Call, point and vote.
We still gonna approve the lease?
Yes, sir. It'd be brought back to you.
Yeah, you gotta bring it back.
We gotta bring it back to you.
We just authorized them to get it together.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Uh-huh.
Any approve?
Hey, Joe Ari?
I'm one.
All right, Doc, we'll see if we can come up with something.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Chairman's report. I don't have any type of report, but I would like to report that, uh, Stuart and I are working very diligently on trying to get a lot of the blanks filled in along with the EDC board as far as certifying our site so that we can, uh, my personal goal is to try to get it to where we can actually go hard sale it, see if we can make something happen. Now, we've got some big questions to, uh, answer. The biggest one in my opinion is how we're gonna finance getting water from the Dan River and then to the site. But we, uh, working on some ideas and hopefully we'll have a game plan that we can actually make something come to pass. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report. Commander, you got anything?
I do not, sir.
Any commissioners got anything they want to talk about tonight?
We have another senior, uh, public comment on May 11th at 5 o'clock here at the Person County Office Building. We would like for all citizens to come and interject.
All right.
Including public officials. Let's do that.
Can you define that?
I don't think I have to.
Okay, um, we need to go in closed session.
Motion to go in closed session.
To consult with an attorney, if there's one available, to establish, to instruct the public body staff on negotiation, agents concerning the position to be taken on behalf of the public body and negotiating the price and other material terms of contract. Heidi York, Brenda Reeves, Ronnie Cox, Sibletake, and by phone, Mike Brissette. How you pronounce his name?
Bryncheck.
Bryncheck. All in favor say aye.